Thank you. We need reminders.
Post-it notes?
And our first order of business is the selection of the Planning Commission Chair and Vice Chair. Only a few of us here.
I think you're doing a wonderful job.
Thank you.
I would, if the Chair is willing to continue with this, I would nominate Michelle Plotnick. And I would second that.
Thanks. All in favor? And I would nominate our Vice Chair. Aren't you our current Vice Chair? To continue in that position if you are willing.
I believe I would second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
So, nothing changes. And we will move on to the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And do we have any staff announcements today?
Yes, Madam Chair, congratulations. Commissioner Ladish, congratulations. Commissioner Parker, welcome back. Regina has some announcements to make.
Very exciting news. So, as you know, we've been trying to get through the zoning code update for the last two years. Due to staffing issues and one thing and another, obviously, we haven't gotten too far, but that's about to change. So, the Board has placed an extreme priority on our update to the zoning code. And Gabriel and I have been working together along with Martha Miller. We've just revised, or I should say renewed, her contract. So, we've got the next year to work on this. So, kind of how it's going to play out is we've basically broken the code down into three sections. I'm reviewing those sections as we speak. Upon my completion of my review and meetings with Gabriel, we will go ahead and start our study sessions. Once the study sessions start, then it's just going to be a continuous roll until we're done. So, it's going to be this fast and furious kind of track we're going to be on. So buckle down and get ready because we're going to be seeing a lot of each other here real soon.
Well, I'm very excited to hear that.
It's very exciting.
Madam Chair, I see if that's not enough work for you. The GHG measures that we've been working on, we got word recently that we'll be getting responses back in April. So, between April and July, we're going to be going through a series of meetings and trying to figure out how we're going to close that 50-something thousand metric tons of CO2. So, that's going to be coming up as well. And it's very possible that we might be doing that concurrent with some of the study sessions on that. So, fasten your seatbelts.
Be like the general plan all over again.
And also, not too far beyond the horizon would be the Oak Woodlands Ordinance, which has been with the Hardwood Address Committee now for several weeks. We are getting to the end of that process. That would also be coming up to you, you know, in short order. So, you're going to have a very busy plate within the next few months or so. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any agenda changes today?
Yes, there is one. Item two on the agenda, which is the Plan Development Permit for Jeffries for the Artist Retreat. We're asking that you continue this to, I believe we want to continue it to March 9th. We had a few matters that came up yesterday that we didn't have time to resolve. I need a little bit extra time to do some research and a couple of things. So, we'll be bringing back to you a revised agenda, or a revised report, excuse me. And we're hoping to get this back to you on the 9th. So, that means if you concur, then we won't be re-noticing the item. It will just appear on the agenda for March 9th.
I was wondering if, before we actually continue it, if we can ask the staff a few questions about that item? Because it's unclear to me what the scope of the review is here. And that, well, anyhow. I do have some questions. Not specific questions about the case, but just what are we doing?
Just the process?
Yeah.
The process?
Yeah.
Well, the process of a plan development is a little kind of convoluted. I think there's intent, and then there's code. And they don't seem to jive too well. So, the intent of the process is just to review the design of a project, as, you know, as how it conforms to the community and the surrounding area, but not necessarily, or absolutely not at all, the specific uses of a project. Where we get a little sideways with the whole review is the SEQA portion of a discretionary application. So, there is no outright SEQA exemption for the design review, and there's nothing written into code that exempts specifically these projects from SEQA. So, if we don't find an exemption, then of course, we enter ourselves into a full-on SEQA analysis, which then kind of opens up the whole process to anything and everything. So, it's kind of a little kind of convoluted, to be honest with you.
Also, it seems convoluted in that if we're basically looking at the aesthetics, the design, compatibility with the community, that's one thing. But the various departments have come up with specific conditions and that don't really have anything to do with the aesthetics.
No, you're right. They have nothing to do with the aesthetics. The odd thing about that is, is those are regulatory compliance with code. And so, even if this plan development process did not exist, you would still, the applicants would still be, you know, it would still be necessary for them to comply with code requirements. They still have to get a building permit. They still have to comply with, you know, fire safety regulations. They still have to comply with Public Works requirements for, you know, safe access and things like that. So, all of the things that you would find in the, mostly in those conditions are just regulatory compliance that's just kind of reiterated. But every once in a while, we do get something that is specific to the design of the project. That is beside any regulatory compliance.
But it's just, it seems that we're mixing, I mean, convoluted is a good word. We're mixing two functions here.
Right, right.
One is as if we're doing a conditional use permit with all these conditions.
That's really kind of, almost seems what it's taking on is more of the life of a CUP rather than a plan development.
Does it need to be that way?
We, staff doesn't think it needs to be that way. And that's why in the update, the draft right now, we've actually modified that whole section. Hopefully, you guys will like what we've done. But yeah, we're trying to take it back to what it was really intended for was just simply design. Many of you, Michelle might be the only one that remembers how the PD actually started. It actually started as a DR, which was Design Review. Each community plan had an appointed Design Review Committee. And the Design Review Committee was responsible for reviewing the designs of projects in the DR combining zone for compliance with the community plan. Well, as you know, the adoption of the general plan in 2019, we no longer have those community plans. Some community plans have policies, or community areas have policies rolled into the general plan. But to convolute things, since we like that word, none of the communities, with the exception of McCollum Hill, has actual design guidelines. And so, there's another component. We don't have any guidelines to actually vet this stuff through. So, there's nothing to compare it to. It's just a matter of, you know, one's opinion of whether or not it conforms or doesn't. But McCollum Hill is the exception. And hopefully, other communities, you know, will either see if they have, if they really see value in the plan development or what might become the design review, then maybe they'll come forth with design guidelines for their individual communities, assuming that, you know, we can maybe modify this section of code to bring it back to what it really is supposed to be.
So, I don't want to go too far afield into a full-on discussion of how we're changing PDP because we don't have that on the agenda. I do, based on Commissioner Ladish's comments, feel that I can work with the Planning Department to actually do, right now, a more limited review, more limited scope. We can ask departments to review, we can restrict what they can review for, for purposes of the Plan Development Permit. We don't have to give them full-scale review because under the ordinance, we're not actually allowed to talk about the use per se. And I think if we do that, we also have the ability to do a more limited SEQA review because we're limited by the ordinance in terms of how much we're allowed to focus on the overall use anyway. So, I can work with the department on a more limited process for that in the meantime.
Great. Okay. Which was not convoluted at all.
Yeah.
So...
So, when we get to that item, we will go ahead and continue it.
Okay. Because I have a feeling we probably have folks in the audience today that are here specifically for that item. At least I had gotten some phone calls relative to that. So, I'm assuming that they're here for Jeffries.
So, if, we should get to it. We'll move it ahead. We'll make it the first of our regular agenda items. So, this is the opportunity for the public, though, to speak on items within the subject purview of the Commission, but not on the agenda today. Is there anybody in the audience who is here to provide general comments to the Planning Commission? Or anybody online? I don't see Annette.
Annette should be online.
We don't have an advocate. But we do have someone who can, for the first item.
Great.
The applicant, yes.
Yeah, okay. Thank you. So, do you have general public comments not related to an item on the agenda today? Then, we have opened the public comment period. We are closing the public comment periods. There is nobody interested in commenting today. We have the Consent Agenda item. So, we'll open that. Is there anybody who would like to remove the item on the Consent Agenda, simply the minutes for further discussion or correction? A member of the public or the Commission? Nope. Then, we're ready for...
I'll move that we adopt the meeting minutes of December 8th, 2022.
And I will second that.
So, we have a motion and a second. All in favor? Aye. Aye, it passes. Three, zero, zero, I don't know what we do say with vacancies. It's unanimous today with the three of us. Thank you. And then let's go ahead and open that hearing for Item 2, 2022-031, Plan Development Permit for John and Marina Jeffries. And the proposal is to continue it to March 9th. Is there any member of the Commission or the public who has any objections to that? Nope, hearing none. We'll close the public comment portion and take a vote on this. Do I have a motion?
Madam Chair, just a technical question. If there are people in the audience that may want to inform the Commission or address the Commission regarding this item, can they provide those comments today even though the item will be continued?
I think that if we're continuing the item, they can comment on whether or not to continue it, but not the actual item because we're not opening the hearing.
Okay. Are you here today for that? What is your comment based on? The project itself? Are those the Jeffries?
No, the applicants are not present today.
Okay. Oh, you live next to the project. Have you got any intu-, I'm sorry.
Let's go ahead and open the public comment portion and let you come up and give your comments. You understand that there may be changes.
You may be commenting on something else.
Yeah.
Hello. My name is Philip Sherwood. My wife and I are here today because we have a home in the Millwoods Development on Mill Creek Circle. We've lived there nearly 10 years.
Sir, could you spell your last name, please?
Sherwood. S-H-E-R-W-O-O-D. Our property butts this project on its northern part. The habitat is a concern for us. We have a lot of wildlife. That's the best way of saying that. This past summer, a female mule deer brought her babies about 20 feet away from us, laid down, had a nap. We've had a bear cub next door in the home next to us, sleeping underneath the deck. We have a lot of wildlife. Obviously, this development will change the habitat. And there will be fewer opportunities for the natural world to utilize it. A concern that we have is about the deforestation. In the proposal, and I had some dealings with one of the staff members of the Planning Department, the indication of that information is that 10 trees, plus or minus 10, will be removed. Well, there's a very beautiful forest. And I'm concerned about how many trees, particularly those trees that are right next to our property. In fact, one of the trees has its branches over our deck. We really don't want them to be removed. They provide a natural barrier for this project. And if there are, if we don't have at least 200 feet of clearance of trees, it'll raise a bigger problem, and that's noise. One of the concerns we have, and we don't have an answer for it, are what events are going to be actually taken from the outdoor event center. Currently, our property and this parcel also is next to the Bistro Espresso Amphitheater. And on Friday nights in the summer, there are concerts. And they're usually for about two hours. And you can really hear them. There's no question about it. Some of the music's good, some of it isn't good. But we haven't complained because it's in the best interest of the community to have recreational opportunities. And so, you know, what we are fearful of is for this project to work economically. They're going to have to have a lot of events, and there are events that are indoors as well as outdoors. I don't see how they're going to make it economically. We've got a foot of snow on the parcel right now. I don't see how they're going to rent out those little cabins when there's a foot of snow. I think it's going to be very, very difficult for them. So, there may be more emphasis on the commercial part of the event centers, outdoor and indoor, to make money. And so, that is, that means more noise. And somehow, that really needs to be mitigated. Those are the primary comments we've got so far. I'll answer any questions you might have, both of you. No, but thank you. Okay. Thank you for the opportunity.
Anybody else before we close the public comment portion again? All right. And are we ready for a motion on the continuance?
Your turn.
Well, I guess I'm going to make a motion that we continue Item Number Two on the agenda until March the 9th, 2023.
Can we confirm, Annette? Can you confirm that date real quick before we get too far down the road?
One moment. Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
I second that. Very appropriate.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. And we will...
Real quick.
So, just so you folks understand, the public hearing that we will actually be discussing the item will be on March 9th. You will not get another notice. So, if you want to attend and participate with the applicant and their agent and the conversations through the Planning Commission, then you'll have to come back on the 9th for another round.
Or join, or join by Zoom.
Or join by Zoom, yes. Yeah, the meeting will begin at 9:00.
Thank you, everybody. Sorry for the inconvenience. And we will take a look at Item 1, 2022-003, Conditional Use Permit for Joe Pluhm.
Great. Good morning, everyone. I'm Kathryn Stephanie. I'm a Planner 1 with the county. And today, the proposed project is requesting approval of a mitigated negative declaration and conditional use permit to construct four additional self-storage buildings totaling approximately 33,000 square feet at an existing mini-storage warehouse facility located at 33 Copper Cove Court in Copperopolis. Existing development on the parcel consists of seven mini-storage buildings totaling 39,500 square feet and one sales office. The original CUP, number 86-09, was approved in 1986, and a subsequent CUP in 1999, number 99-55, permitted the expansion of the facility. APN 061-040-009 is a 5.42-acre parcel zoned rural commercial. It's designated by the general plan as having a commercial land use designation and is located within the Copperopolis Community Plan area. The rural commercial zone of county code allows mini-storage facilities with the approval of a CUP. The purpose of the permit is to provide the general public with an opportunity to review the proposed land use, which may be generally consistent with the purpose of the base zoning district, but has the potential to cause conflicts with neighboring land uses and zoning. The proposed project is compatible with the commercial land use designation as that is for commercial and office uses. And the subject parcel is immediately surrounded by commercial uses to the south and southwest, including restaurants, hardware store, bank. To the north and east is undeveloped grazing lands, and to the northwest are single-family residences. The project was to be found in compliance with all mini-storage development standards. The site plan indicates that access to the buildings is paved and shows the required 25-foot distance between building foundations. The mini-storage development standards also require that use or occupancy can't commence until a final inspection has been conducted and a certificate of occupancy is issued. This is common once a building permit is put in. It also prohibits the conversion of the mini-storage structures to nonmini-storage use without a CUP. And a condition has been added to the resolution that makes sure that these conditions are met. The project also complies with the rural commercial development and performance standards. The parking for this zone requires, it's for the use, I apologize. The parking for this use, which is mini-storage, requires one parking space per 250 square feet of office area with a minimum of two spaces. The site plan shows eight existing spaces, and the office space is not proposed to be expanded. Therefore, no additional parking is required. The zoning also requires landscaping equal to 5% of the area devoted to the buildings and parking. The expansion requires about 3,500 square feet of landscaping. The existing landscaping, we calculated at 19,180 square feet. So, they are well above what is required. And therefore, we haven't conditioned the permit to put in new landscaping. Staff also did a site inspection and found that 19,000 square feet of landscaping is in good condition. No screening is required as no outdoor storage or solid waste or recycling storage areas were proposed, and all setback and height requirements were found to be satisfied. Again, I've conditioned the resolution that they must be in compliance with both the rural commercial and mini-storage standards. The application was circulated to various county departments and local public agencies for 30 days. And during that review period, responses were received from Public Works and the Building Department. Public Works conditioned the permit to require that a grading permit be submitted to their office and that road fees are paid at the issuance of the building permit. The Building Department conditioned the permit to have a licensed design professional be responsible for the development of the plans and submitted to the Building Department and that all relevant California Code of Regulations Title IV items be followed. Additionally, the maximum fire flow of the parcel needs to be reevaluated due to the size of the buildings. No other responses or comments were received. Pursuant to the California Environmental Quality Act guidelines, an initial study and mitigated negative declaration were prepared. The initial study found one item that will have a less-than-significant impact with mitigation. That impact was related to onsite lighting. And a condition of approval has been imposed on the project that requires conformance with the negative declaration, the mitigated negative declaration. The environmental document was available for public review from November 22nd, 2022 to December 22nd, 2022, and no comments were received during that review period. In conclusion, the project as proposed conforms with applicable goals and policies of the County General Plan and zoning ordinances. And the permitting process allows for the addition while giving the opportunity to mitigate impacts to neighbors through permit conditions. The project is found to be compatible with surrounding land uses and zoning in the general vicinity. The subject property is adequate in land area to accommodate the proposed use and was found to have safe and adequate access with no site improvements required. The permit has also been conditioned as necessary to protect the public health, the safety, and welfare, and to reduce or eliminate potential environmental effects.
Are there any questions for Kathryn?
Well, while I have some questions, I want to commend you on the clarity and thoroughness of your work.
Thank you.
It meets standards that we expect from over the years. But I do have some questions.
Okay.
So, this is the third conditional use permit. Does the Planning Department review whether the first two conditional use permits have been complied with? Willing into this sort of review?
Yes, they do.
And they had?
Yes, we found they've been in compliance.
Okay, well, that's good. Then, one of the statements is the parking is dependent upon, number of spaces dependent on the square footage. I don't see anywhere in the resolution or the staff report what the square footage of the office is.
It's pretty small.
I imagine they have...
Yeah, I apologize. I'm not sure off the top of my head. I would need to look at the previous permit. It was permitted within the last few years, and I believe it was around 700 square feet.
So, the number of spaces is...
Yes, I did check that the number of spaces was adequate. I just did not put it in my notes, the exact square. notes, the exact square footage of the, the office space.
And I know we aren't considering the resolution right now, but I have some questions that arose in it. On page four of the resolution, under Public Works' conditions, it, talking about drainage flows, there's a sentence, "All incremental increases in peak flows from the development must be detained on-site." That sounds like there needs to be a dam somewhere or something. Do you know the meaning of that?
I believe that's like a detention basin.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, what?
I believe that's like a detention basin, which is required for all commercial projects, if I'm correct, but we would want to check with Public Works.
It's anything that slows down the rate of flow off. So it could be above-ground basin, or it could be a below-ground.
But this is not just slowing it down, it says detained.
But that's what its purpose is, is to slow it down so it leaves the property at the same rate that it did prior to the project. So that you don't overrun the adjacent property or the existing stormwater system that it's entering.
Ah, so they, okay, so that's the incremental increases.
It detains, if not permanently.
Detained all the water, yeah. Okay, okay. So that makes sense to you. Good, good. Good. Makes sense to you. That sounds good to me. The mitigation measure, I can understand why it shouldn't rest upon the Planning Department at this point to say, "Light standard should be less than six feet tall," and all the specifics, but I'm not, that the, on page nine of the negative declaration, it says the Calaveras County Planning Department will check that the appropriate information is submitted during plan check, and once again, prior to the final inspection, to ensure that the mitigation measure is set. So would that be specifics, that you'll be looking for specifics from the applicant as to just what they're gonna do as far as their lighting is concerned?
Yeah, we're gonna look at whether it's covered and which direction it's pointing and things like that.
And, and at that point, it'll be, we're basically deputizing the Planning Department to make sure that this mitigation measure is...
Yes.
Is actually done. Then, the, under the mandatory findings of significance on pages 25 and 26, this, I guess, reflects the, the significance once the mitigation measure is, is applied, correct?
Yes.
Because that's how you get to a less-than-significant impact.
Yes, it is.
I think, yeah.
There you go. That particular section actually relates to the cumulative effect of the project itself, not just the mitigation measure, but the new construction and all the other aspects of it.
I understand.
Yeah, so, but when you look at it, yeah, it's whether or not...
But, but that it, that, the overall look at the project is with the mitigation measure
Absolutely.
Being in it. That, that was my question.
Right, good.
Okay, I think, I think that's it for now.
So I believe the applicants are online. Is there anything that you guys would like to share with us?
Plume, let me speak.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes.
Well, thank you for considering our projects, and yeah, we have any direct questions. Again, project, this, you mentioned there's, this is a little instrument for the site, but this will be the final goal. So there isn't any future development in the site, so I'm not worried about that. And the existing office is approximately 660 square feet, and that's in the ground. So the front we're talking about was adequately sized. We add a grand additional parking space, um, interior, adjacent to a building to accommodate accessible parking and path to travel to meet the state, uh, requirements. So I guess technically it's a running one space, but it's, uh, really accessible, adjacent to a storage building. So, yeah, any other questions? We'll be, we'll answer.
I do have a question. What, what is your name, sir?
Joe Plume.
How do you spell your last name? Okay, Joe. I was at the site not too long ago with Catherine, looking at the existing landscaping. How often do you look at the landscaping and irrigation system to make sure that those trees that are required are not dying off? We found some shrubs that are basically dead, maybe because of the weather, but do you regularly check that? Because it's a, it's a, it's an important component of the project itself.
Yes, I personally do. We do that with landscape maintenance company monthly to check irrigation, spray foods, and check out. So if there's something insufficient, we can, we might as well make sure we do it later.
Okay, can I, because I think I've asked Catherine to send you an email or, or something drawing your attention to, to some of those trees and shrubs you have on the property that, I think they were planted at least, what, three years ago, two years ago, maybe, since the last CUP?
Yeah, they're less than two years old. So yeah, sometimes if they have an issue with them, if they don't get established immediately, and probably suddenly, yeah, just don't like it. So, yeah, we can, we try to keep up on maintenance, keep the rates down, and we can, you know, professionalize.
Yes. Okay, thank you very much.
Are there any other questions for Mr. Plume? Is there any member of the public who is either online or standing out in the hallway that I can't see who would like to speak to this today?
There's no other online public comment at this time.
Thank you. So seeing nobody will close the public comment portion of the hearing and return this item to the commission. So I assume that we are going to talk a little bit about the resolution unless anybody has any further questions for Catherine.
Right.
Nope. Okay. Let's talk about the resolution a little bit.
Well, I've been blabbing ahead, so, well, either of you have anything?
I have nothing of significance. I was wondering if there was some change that you had made to it in a quick scan. I didn't notice any difference, but...
So, I did give you all a new coffee, and the only change I made is, on the first page, up at the title, it now reads "A Resolution Approving a Mitigated Negative Declaration and Conditional Use Permit." Previously, it said "A Resolution Approving a Conditional Use Permit." So I've just added that language about adopting...
That's purple items, yeah. Thank you.
Now we don't have to go through there. Thank you. Yeah, I have a couple of suggestions. Back in the page two, uh, section, or paragraph four in the evidence section, Mr. Plume has provided the fact, I think we ought to put it in here, that the, about in the middle of the paragraph, at the bottom of page two, the, the sentence reads, "The site plan shows eight parking spaces for the existing office," and I would put a parentheses, approximately 660 square feet in area, close parentheses. Thank you, Mr. Plume, tidying this up. Page three, under paragraph seven in the evidence, the middle line, the word "total" should be "totaling." And, let's see here.
It sure should be.
That was the intent.
Yeah, and then on page five of the resolution, in, in condition three dash one, subparagraph I, right about in the middle, there's a, a series there that should be separated by semicolons, and there's one missing. So, well, I mean, if Kelly's not here...
We were speculating on this.
So, the phrase "measures to detain storm water on the project site" should be followed by a semicolon, and then lowercase m on "measures" to match the rest of the series there. And finally, condition four dash one, a licensed design professional...
Thank you.
And that's what I have.
Nice job.
That's pretty good.
Keep everybody on their toes.
Yes. You kept one of us on our...
Yeah, I didn't realize Kelly wasn't gonna be here until after I'd already reviewed it.
I have a question on that. The, the, the basic agenda we got said that his position was vacant. Is that so?
It is. He's retired.
Commissioner Ladish, Commissioner, former Commissioner Worcester sent in his letter of resignation. Yes.
You might check, then, the website for the Planning Commission shows him re-elected.
Right. I think it's something we, we're gonna have to change. But once we have a replacement for him, then by next meeting, we would have four commissioners, one of whom would be the replacement for former Commissioner...
Fisk.
Fisk, yes. And then at the following meeting, because the board has to appoint, at the following meeting, you would have five commissioners, one of whom would be the replacement for Commissioner, former Commissioner Worcester.
Let's, let's hope the supervisors...
Absolutely. We're hoping.
Yep. And nobody turns and runs from the position. Okay, do I have a motion on the mitigated negative declaration and conditional use permit as amended?
I've moved that we adopt the negative, mitigated negative declaration and the resolution as amended. Because we didn't, we didn't get an official recommendation from you, sir.
Would you like me to make my recommendation?
Yes, I think so.
All right. Staff recommends that the Planning Commission adopt the mitigated negative declaration and approve resolution 2023-003 as amended for a CUP to allow the construction of four additional self-storage buildings totaling approximately 33,000 square feet at an existing mini-storage warehouse facility located at 33 Copper Cove Court, Copperopolis, APN 061-040-009 in the rural commercial zone.
And you make my job a lot easier by saying, "I so move."
I second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? None.
And this item is final and must appeal to the Board of Supervisors within 15 calendar days.
Woo-hoo. Let's see, I think we have no informational items today. Are there any Commissioner reports?
Yes, I, I, having just heard about Commissioner, former Commissioner Worcester's retirement, I think we ought to state a deep appreciation for all the time he has spent for many, many years on this commission, and very conscientious and, and constructive work and taking of positions, many of which I have disagreed with, but I very much respect Mr. Worcester, and I wish him the best. And I think Calaveras County is, is a lesser entity for him not actually continuing in this position.
Yeah, we're, I will miss him, so.
Thankfully, we still have you to do the wordsmithing, though.
The semicolons are mine.
He was quite a wordsmith.
The semicolons are mine.
And we look forward to some new folks. Yeah, yeah. Any, any reports from Commissioner Parker?
Crickets for me.
Crickets from you, okay. And so, does our planning director want to share anything?
Well, Madam Chairman, Mr. Planning Commission, as I said earlier, welcome to 2023. We are going to have some very enlightening discussions as we move along with the zoning ordinance update and some of these other special projects that have been put in our path for which the Planning Commission is gonna play a very significant role. I hope that the level of cooperation we've experienced so far continues, even with new planning commissioners. We're gonna try to live up to our expectations as a planning department. At this particular point, there are no specific things going on in our department that needs to be reported. All the things that we're looking forward to are just the projects that are gonna come your way. Now, aside of those special projects that have been put on us by the Board of Supervisors, there's gonna be occasional, you know, CUPs and variances and things of that nature that are gonna be coming your way. So I, I, I imagine 2023 is gonna be a very busy year, not only for staff, but also for the Planning Commission. Thank you.
Do you anticipate that the study sessions for the zoning code are going to be additional dates beyond our two regular meetings each month?
We hadn't really thought that far ahead. I suppose if there's, if we find that there's a need, depending on how quickly, you know, we can run through the material, there may be a need to add special meetings, but we'll just have to take it one step at a time and see where we can get with just keeping it on our normally scheduled meetings.
And since, you know, going into the year, calendars are being set, and camping trips and vacations, and family get-togethers and all that stuff, I much prefer a long meeting on a regular date than adding more, because especially if you only have a quorum of three...
Right.
One person can't be here, why...
We should have a full quorum of five by the time these start.
We should.
Unless somebody decides that they made a horrible mistake. Let's hope that doesn't happen. So I ask that all of you stay healthy. Take your vitamin C and get lots of rest.
Yeah.
Madam Chair, I would just like to inform the commission that we will not be having a meeting on, I believe it's the 23rd.
Of February.
Of February, yes.
Thank you.
Yeah, so if any of you are planning vacations or any time off during this next year, and you, you already know of those dates, you know, feel free to send Annette an email... you, you already know of those dates, you know, feel free to send Annette an email or a voicemail so we can kind of keep track. That way, we can try to keep everything on schedule and not miss a day.
Yeah. And with that happy news that we can think about our vacations and let them know when we plan to be taking them, we'll adjourn this meeting and see everybody back here on March 9, 9:00 AM.